Trustee Brochus, trustee enthusiast, trustee Brunner, trustee Paul Mikowski.
Here.
Trustee Hartman.
Here.
Trustee Calvater, here. President Langfeld.
Here.
And trustee enthusiast has walked in.
The same pure of leged allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents. It may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. So do we have anybody here that would like to speak? Can you check to see if anybody out there in cyber world wants to speak? All right, we will move on ceremony. I'm going to turn this over to Vice President Judy.
Hey, everybody. Good night or good evening, I should say. We have an award here, Beth, if you want to stand up. This is going to be a word that we are going to give to Beth Hamilton in honor of Randy Case. And I know his real name is Charles, but we always called him Randy. And I served with him for 12 years and longer than that. And honestly, personally, I looked up to him all the time because he was so smart and he knew what he was doing. I always looked at him like, what's the right answer? So I know I leaned on him a lot, but I know the whole village did a lot. And we know that he was on planning from 1978 to 2021. Board of Zonia Peels from 1980 to 2012. And then Cedar Glen here development, he helped with that with all the committee on that from 1988 to 2021. So we just want you to know how much we appreciated them all of the years of his service. He was great. That's thank you very much.
Proud to raise his three boys here and to work with all of you.
It was an honor working with him for all these years. He was a great, a great person to help everybody along and with the historical part and his research and his questions. It made us all better.
Nice to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Okay, we'll go to consent agenda. Upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, we'll go to report from village officer. The only thing I have is Mike and I and Bill have spent a lot of time getting things all ready. It's quite the busy time right now with all the items going on. So I just let you know that we've been in good communications and things I are moving forward still on things that have to be moved forward. All right, village vice president. All right, other trustee reports? All right, village administrator.
The only thing I have is this is day one and it was everything I thought it would be. A lot, a lot going on. It's pretty hectic, but overall is a good start to it. So look forward to it over the next month or so or couple of months or every season. Keep things moving along.
All right, thank you. Any other reports? You see, do you know if any of the other department heads want to speak? Okay, very good. Okay, we'll go to general business versus regarding the Class B liquor license application for Ellie Dundra and Interwitz. I'm sure I butchered those names. You want to just?
If you'd like to unmute your microphone at this time and give your report on this.
I really have no report. It was a normal business. We did a background check. They've passed everything that is required of, of the application process.
All right, do I have a motion to grant a license?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. So move. Number two is discussion possible action regarding the continuance of police officer funding. I asked to have this placed on, as you know, one of our officers, it's in the packet, is resigning. The whole hiring process belongs to the police commission. Our role is to make sure they're still funding for that position. I have not heard anybody not want to fund, but I wanted to make sure everybody was okay with the continuation of funding for that police officer spot. So could I have a motion for that, please? All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, discussion and possible action to bid the well three wellhouse construction contract. I think Brian, oh no, Evans is here to kind of give us an overview.
Hi, everyone. Can you see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. So I just wanted to provide an update for everybody. It's been a little while since we last talked on the contract B. So if you recall, we had contract day, which was to drill well three. That is, as you saw on the consent consent agenda, pretty well wrapped up. The well is drilled. We have a little bit of closeout with municipal well and pump. The next stage is putting the wellhouse around it, some upgrades at well two. And then village wide SCADA upgrades so that everything's talking and communicating with each other. We are just putting the final touches on that contract B, which includes the plans and specs for everything I just mentioned. Wanted to just put in front of the board, just kind of what we've been seeing with the bidding climate lately. It's probably not a surprise that there's been issues with labor, issues with materials. And then with that comes some inflation. So just recently, we have been seeing bids coming in up to 50% high. So we've, we've actually had some projects that have to get put on the shelf. And I think in your case, we, we understand that well three is already drilled and we need to put a wellhouse around that. So we are working with staff to put together some alternative option or alternative bid options so that we've got a little flexibility on bid date. One of those being well two as a whole, so making sure that that is bid separately so that we do not have to rebid the project. So well three is a priority, making sure that that gets included. And then obviously, we hope for well two to happen. But then if, if the bids come in higher, if budget's not there, we have the ability to flex that out if necessary. So that's kind of, and we've done some other things with different pipe material. Ductile iron pipe is predominantly what all the village uses for water main. We have been seeing some delays on that of up to nine months right now. So just trying to offer some flexibility to the contractor in order to make sure that other materials are an option and nothing that is set in stone, but options that you guys would get on bid day to then explore is the price hopefully deduct worth the change in material. So things like that, we are trying to maximize flexibility for the contractor in terms of schedule because that is the other big issue right now is getting a contractor with all of their crew to show up and get the job done in the allotted time. So mainly just wanted to give everybody the overview on that. We are planning to have a bid opening at Village Hall on Tuesday, February 15th. And then that would afford us a little bit of time to review bids and then come to the board on the 28th with the recommendation. So that's, that was the gist of it. Again, I wasn't trying, hopefully not trying to scare everybody, but we are seeing an interesting bidding climate right now and just want to make the board aware of that.
What was the time for February 15th for the bid opening?
2:00 PM. Yes.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Evan? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to four discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to accept stormwater infrastructure in the Glacier Ridge subdivision and reduce the security bond amount. Is this something Brian, you're going to explain to us or?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So the, that subdivision has appeared done for a number of years to, to most of the village. There were quite a few smallish things that added up to cumulatively requiring a decent amount of construction and repair over the last two years. The last remaining item was some grading and storm sewer to be put in to address some grading concerns from one of the residents that the backyard was not graded properly and we concurred. Veridian proposed a, a regrading of the area between these two lots, lots 22 and 21 on your screen with some storm sewer added in. The work is done and it looks fine. The rub is that it was done in late November, so the asphalt patch. We'd like to let that get a winter on it, make sure that doesn't settle. And also the grass seed was not planted until that same time. So the developer has requested reduction, release of the financial surety for the subdivision. We're recommending sitting tight on that until spring when you can confirm that the patch is holding and the grass is growing. So that would be our recommendation tonight is sit tight until summer or springtime, excuse me.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Brian? Or just disagree at all?
No, I agree.
All right, it sounds, it looks like everybody's in agreement with you, Brian, so we'll hold off until spring on that request.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let them know of that as well.
All right, thank you. All right, discussion and possible action regarding cluster box unit location for Creek Crossing at St. Francis subdivision. Are you want to give an overview or?
So currently, Veridian is requesting a change in the cluster mailboxes that has in the creeks crossing new subdivision. They're asking to change where those easements would be located for, or on the plat. There's been some email going back and forth between staff or between Bill and Angie at, from Veridian. And mainly just, and also I should say USPS in regards to this change. Veridian is now saying that, along with USPS, that they would request that this change be made from those lots to the new lots. And that would cause all of us to, or all of you to decide to change the plat as well. And a new recording by Veridian for that, for that change. So if Jay would like to.
Yeah, I do. I, first of all, I got a couple of things. One, just so everybody understands right now, the plot, the plat map, both the preliminary and the final has the box cluster that we're talking about on lot 19. They want to move it to lot one. So I'm not, if you read from the postmaster, she's on the impression we are trying to propose to move it from one to 19, which is not the case. My concern is we have been very straightforward and pretty tight on once these plat maps go to preliminary and final that we hold. You look at the well, you look at extending Laughenberg through. The whole idea of putting those mailboxes where we did was to give incentive for people to stay on Church Street to Hill Point to come into that subdivision from the east side of it because the neighborhood was very concerned with the increase in traffic. If we put the mailboxes in lot one, it will pretty much draw people coming in from St. Francis to Laughenberg Brewery to Laughenberg. They get to the mailboxes, they'll have to park across the street. If they do come in from the east, they'll pull alongside the road, get their mail, and most likely they will drive to the traffic circle and make a circle around that and go back. That is not designed to be a roundabout. It's designed to be a traffic calming device. So I think it puts greater, I have greater safety concerns in moving it to lot one. But again, we have been very firm with these final plats. And I think the traffic study, when they talked about it, was all talking about those mailboxes being on the east side. I think the impact to the neighborhood that was, I just don't see a great justification for doing this. And I want to remind everybody, this is not the developer that's asking for this. This is no different than an individual. Veridian bought lot 19, knew it. They sold it, I think. That person saw that it was in. I see no reason to change that and put an unburden, a burden on the existing neighborhood. Those are my two cents worth on this.
Was lot one unsold?
I have no idea. I have no idea. Veridian, the developer is the Creek Crossing LLC. And that's who we decided with all that.
Veridian's building for somebody on 19, basically, and that person wants to choose boxes off.
Veridian's asking for it. I, I can't, I bet I couldn't tell you. Yes. Everybody okay? All right, yep.
Hi, this is Angie Veridian. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I thank you guys for your time for discussing this. And Veridian just always likes to express, you know, that we're always cut in the middle between a municipality and the post office for CBU locations and trying to make everybody happy, trying to figure out the best in decisions. So we do understand the traffic issue that you have expressed. And just by talking to the post office, you know, they wanted to have it on both sides of this or on the same side of the street, on one street, just for their line of travel. Because they always like to make a right turn continuously through a neighborhood if possible. So even if they kind of come in and they take a ride on Conrad Drive to deliver on lot 19, then they would have to take a left on Laughenberg headed up to lot 24, which then they would actually have to cross the street or do a U-turn to accommodate those CBUs on lot 24. So that's why we wanted to recommend moving it from lot 19 to lot one to keep it on the same street, on the same side of the street. So that was just, you know, the develop, previous developer had received approval from you guys on the plat. And so when we kind of took over, that was our recommendation is trying to shift it to better accommodate the USPS for their delivery process. So at least wanted to give you guys a little bit of background of how we came about from moving it to, from lot 19 to lot one.
Okay, I guess I'm going to ask you, so the post office actually contacted you to do this? Or did you contact them? Because they had an opportunity to view this both at the preliminary and the final. And they had no objections at that time. So did they actually contact you?
We actually contacted them, talking about the location. We actually contacted the previous developer about the situation. Once we were going through the, the sign off, none of the preliminary plat, but the sign off before closing. And he mentioned if we got approval from the post office, which that's why we went to the post office to recommend the change. And they said, yeah, that would actually be a better route for them versus the other way. So when you guys go through the approvals, do you actually meet or reach out to the post office for their comments?
Well, my understanding, we have to get approval from them. I, I don't know, Brian, do you know that for sure?
I, I am not sure. I know the village doesn't reach out, but we, we do require the developer to confirm those are good, obviously, for the same reasons Jay that you've enumerated here. But the village typically weighs in and then the developer works at the post office.
Okay, thank you. All right, does, I, I guess, does anybody have any questions for her? So can I have a motion? It should be in the positive and then we'll go to discussion and then vote.
I'll make a motion to leave the CBUs where they are in the final and preliminary, or in the preliminary plat.
Is there any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee enthusiast?
Yes.
Trustee Brunner?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
Trustee Calvater?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. We'll go to discussion and possible action regarding CNC services contract for the library roof replacement and repairs. Do you want Brian to start or do you want to start, Mike? Brian, you want to fill us in and give us the rundown here, please?
Sure. So the library roof project was intended, conceived of to address some of the roof failures that have allowed water in the building over the years. Unfortunately, the way in which the contractor started the project caused some significant water damage inside the building. That is still being worked out through the villages and his insurance company. In the meanwhile, there's just been delay after delay after delay, failure to take advantage of good weather, being caught by bad weather, and the work is still not quite done. The gutters system was the last thing needing to be installed. They're about 90% complete with that. Unfortunately, the snows over the weekend have, I don't know if you've heard this yet, anybody on the board. I got an email from Pam this morning that they were getting water drips again. Appears as though the snow over the weekend is melting because the insulation inside the building had to be removed because it was wet. And there are some ice dams there. The contractor, I ordered the contractor to the site today to remove the snow, so they were up on the roof trying to get as much snow off as they can. And just as I was waiting for the meeting to start, got an email from the contractor that they will be bringing mitigation equipment to the site tomorrow. That'll likely be either heated blankets to remove, melt the ice or otherwise clear out those gutters. So long and short of it, the project is not still done, unfortunately. The village does require bonding for all of its projects. This one is no exception. So the current status of the contract is it is bonded, it is not quite done. And the contractors owed about 70,000 of that original 131,000. In order to call the bond, the village would need to declare the contractor in default. The procedure for doing that starts with a pre-default meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. The next step could be the village board declaring default and then the bonding company would need to bring somebody else in to finish the work. It's a bit of a sticky situation because the bonding company has advised that they, they don't have a local roofer that they can get out there on short notice. And to confirm that, we've actually called around ourselves and confirmed there are not any roofers that we were able to find that could be here any earlier than like six weeks. So it's, it's a, it's not a great situation. My suggestion for the board tonight is actually not to declare the roofer in default out of concern that if that is done, the one person that we've got that's bringing equipment and men to the site takes their ball and goes home. You still have the ability and may indeed, in fact, want to declare him in default in the future, maybe in the near future. But given what happened today and just this communication from just a little before 6:00 PM tonight that he'd be on site to address it, I think he's our best, unfortunately, our best chance of stabilizing the situation in otherwise bad spot where it's going to be really cold and difficult to get, get those ice dams addressed. So my, long and short of it, very displeased with the performance, but having to choose between practically getting things addressed fast, I would say to hold off on, on default this evening. But it is certainly a village board choice.
Hey, Brian, here, here's my concern. You know, we did a, we used our insurance company for the claim for the damage inside. And they made it pretty clear that we have to take steps to prevent more damage. And now we've got water again coming in today. I'm just concerned on what, how do we defend ourselves if the insurance company says, we told you, you needed to take steps. Are you, are you keeping good journal notes on when you're talking to these people and that? You know, they're our only choice right now, just in case our insurance company starts to back away a little bit from this endless pit?
Absolutely, yes, on the notes. Every time I call the contractor, I've been doing this for the last two months. I also email him about what we talked about or what my voicemail was about. So absolutely, yes, there. Your insurance company did advise you that last, at Bill's kind of checkout meeting, I believe that was resolved because they were, they were told go, 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 like insurance company. And they were just dicker and dealing with this contractor on cost, not that the village was holding them up. I do a plan B here. I just played a little phone tag with Jerry today. If, if for some reason the contractor is unable or unwilling to perform tomorrow, I was going to see if perhaps village crew would have some availability, at least pull the snow down, the rest of the snow down and get some flow channels going. It is something that needs to be done, no question about it, but but for these guys, unfortunately, I think they're best option in the next 48 hours, which is critical.
Does anybody else have any questions for Brian on this situation? Go ahead, Bill.
So in the, the document that we have, it says contract has a $500 day penalty for non-compliance beyond construction deadline. Are we charging that out right now or, or what's the idea behind that, Brian?
The, all of the contracts also have what's called liquidated damages clause that makes the contractor incur cost or you reduce payment by a certain amount to cover your administrative costs, real costs. And we've had to have our inspector come out much, much more often. Those are being tallied up as we speak. The village has only made the single payment. The village has only made the single payment. Excuse me, maybe only the single payment back in. I'm gonna say it was November, early November for materials. So at this point. We are and will continue to recommend no payment period. Until spring. There's just two, these penalties have been adding up. We want to make sure the village has funds withheld. To pay deductibles on insurance as needed. Given the time of year it is now, even the gutter work won't be able to be fully and properly inspected until spring. So right now that five hundred dollars a day is simply being. Tick marked up on the spreadsheet that we keep. That will. That'll be used as far as our final recommendation for payment, but that'll get deducted from their payment.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Anybody else? So I guess Brian is recommending that we don't default. And I guess I, I mean, we're kind of stuck in a corner, right? If we do that.
Yeah, it's horrible. Yeah.
So I guess any other questions that anybody has on this or action, otherwise we'll, we'll use it as a information.
Yeah, no, that was, I was gonna say, we, we don't need a motion.
No, no.
Continuing on.
No, I just wanted to make, the whole reason was this, at one point we were thinking that it might be time because we did have that meeting. To discuss it. So there was that possibility that there would have been a recommendation to default on it. And get this thing done. I feel really sorry for that library staff and Pam, all the problems they got to be dealing with.
Yeah. When's our next meeting that we would have, be able to discuss this if indeed we wanted to?
Well, I think right now, February eighth, we could, we have that special meeting on the eighth.
Yep. Would we have enough?
Otherwise it'd be the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, would we have enough time? Like. I guess I'm wondering like, when's our next opportunity to declare default, declare this contract default? So it sounds like the eighth? That's soon enough that I think we can leave it. Thanks.
Yeah, just, I mean, assuming that we don't end up going down that route. At the end of this process, is there any legal recourse that we can take as a village, so you don't put this contractor on some other poor town and village to screw up their library roof?
Well, like I say, we're withholding the payment. Obviously, we're gonna get everything. I'm, it, it may end up being in a legal fight. You know, I mean, if we withhold, they may sue us. I mean, it's, you know how it goes. I. I, we've kind of talked about it. There's probably a pretty good chance that this is eventually gonna end up in the courts at some point, but. We'll try to work something out, obviously, that's fair to everybody. And we certainly have paid the price. If you think about it. Alright, very good. Thank you, Brian. Alright, discussion and possible action regarding the park and playground location on Evergreen Parkway. Mike?
Alright, so I can take this one. The village purchased roughly fourteen acres, which was the Beekner Farm back in two thousand sixteen. Throughout this time, obviously, there was a development, which is the Veridian Development Glacier Ridge Development that you were talking about a little bit earlier. Within this. How it worked out, the village was given a credit for point four two acres. Which is what the parkland dedication was in the amount for a playground and or park to be added to their development. That was never put in the plat, nor was the land ever really donated with the, by giving the credit to the village. It ended up going on the total amount of what the land the village received. Since that date, there's been a number of plans put together and they just concept plans. The first one that you'll see within the packet. Which is this one here was put together by the village board and or village staff. At the time to declare how many acres the village was really going to need in the time that they were looking to. Develop this or this area for development. Since then, there's been a number of other. Plans that have been put together and or discussions on this topic. As of late, it went to the plan commission to discuss this project in more depth. More about the, the playground itself is, we're at the point now where the actual. Parkland dedication money that was set aside for this project is to it about its due date. So over the last year or so that we've held a public's meeting session. And tried to listen to the community about what they would like to see in regards to that playground and we're looking for. We're more or less looking at the village board to approve a plan so that we can start this process further come spring, summer of this, this year. For the playground development.
So this is the, what, what's being proposed that has planned, correct? Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we. Approve the park and playground location of Evergreen using exhibit E. That's in our packet, which is what we're seeing up on the screen. And, you know. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Alright, any discussion? Kevin?
Have you, that point four one acres that that was sort of credited, are you trying to stick in that amount or does it, you feel that it doesn't matter? Because I'm asking you with your parks hat on, I'm like.
Oh, in regards to how much space?
How much space that the playground would take up in this, like, because you know, looking at it now, that looks like more than point four, but I, I don't know if that matters or not.
Yeah, the, the, this is more or less just looking for the location.
General location? You don't, do you feel there's like a maximum size that the, the footprint would have to take up?
We'll figure that out once we approve, once you approve this.
So no, yeah, okay, okay. Okay.
There's roughly thirty thousand dollars for this project. No other funding for it currently. From there, so we'll be placing and we're putting a playground in for that thirty thousand.
So minimum, okay. But in, in, truth be told, if we, you know, something bigger happens or someday the multimillion dollar complex and we have to move a playground, then, you know.
I think that's why Plan chose that spot.
Yeah.
Not interfere.
Maybe, yeah, I mean, even if it did, I don't think it'd be that, you know, from my standpoint, it wouldn't be that big a deal to move it if we had to. Thank you.
But we also have quite, oh, sorry, we also have quite a few years to use it. We don't have to do it right away. We have till two thousand thirty or whatever.
No, 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 we are too bad. So you have seven years?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion?
Obviously, this has come up at Parks and Rec quite often over the limited amount of time I spend on that committee as its chair. And so these residents have very clearly voiced their concern about not getting this done before their kids age out of such a park. And so I think if we can provide some movement on this for those residents, they'd be greatly appreciated.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. Alright, number eight, discussion and possible action regarding an ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter sixty-three. Regarding waste management.
So, so this one, I'm, I'm not that familiar with. I did read through Bill's memo here. It appears that you had went through this already back in December. He has just proposed and or given you the new, the newest. Draft of what that ordinance would be and he stated in yellow, everything in yellow was really what was changed. He also has notes within. In that draft one.
Yeah, if you remember last month, we went over this, people found. Some changes, so that's what he did, so it's. Brought back. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
Yep.
I have a motion in a second. Regarding an ordinance to repeal and recreate chapter sixty-three regarding waste management. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. Alright, number nine, discuss, discussion and possible action to appoint the village hall slash police station planning subcommittee. We kind of gave you an overview of this at the last meeting. People made some suggestions. And this is the end result of taking those suggestions and following through with them. So this would be the makeup of the subcommittee. These are the nominations I'm making. Bill?
I'll make a motion, we approve the nominations. It's, it's in our packet for the. Subcommittee for the village hall police station planning.
Do I have a second? Alright, I have a motion in a second, discussion. Go ahead, Judy.
My, my, my question was just more like.
He's on the work group for the employee benefit.
I was just kind of out of curiosity, what is the, you know, the time dedication needed for a member of this?
Um, well, at first, it'll be somewhat light. I would think the next, the first and second quarter, the third quarter, a little bit busier, the fourth quarter will start going and then next year it'll be very busy. Yeah.
Have you already asked Jason Franzen?
Yes, I have.
Oh.
I wouldn't put him on if I. That would be risky. Yes, I have. Kevin?
Oh, yeah, is the assumption that, you know, because this will take a couple of years, if somebody does not get reelected as a trustee or does not run again as a trustee or, or president. That they'd be filled in by the current position? So it's really the position more so than as the person. Thank you.
Yeah, so if I don't get elected village president, whoever's village president would be on here. That's the same thing with staff, if one of those, so thank you. It's really the, the position that they hold. Any other questions? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so move. Okay, future agenda items. Bill?
Again, I just want to, if we can get on the February. Agenda on raises for.
We need, you need to give me something to.
I will, I, I, I will, and it's, it's mostly done, but we weren't ready for this meeting.
No, that's why I just want to say, you send it to me, we'll get it on the agenda.
You'll have it probably hopefully by, in the next week.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
And I just, clarification, I know Bill had said it a few meetings back that. The animal husbandry recommendations and chicken coops from the environmental. Recommendations to the board was gonna get put on plan at some point and I thought that was happening in January.
No, I, I was waiting, I thought you were gonna take it more on the equity. Part of it, because with the multifamily, you were gonna come up with some language.
Okay.
And give it to us and then I'll put it on plan.
Okay.
I'm not sure the environmental part, Bill and I, that's the only part that I know related to chick, chicken coops. Just waiting for, because you brought up a good point on.
Yeah, sounds good.
So as soon as I get something to start with, we'll put it in. I always think it's easier to have something to discuss and then just throw it out here and try to. Swing in.
Sounds good.
Yep. Anything else? Alrighty, do I have a motion to go into closed session number one? Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, roll call, please.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yeah.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Brunner?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
President Langford?
Yes, we are now in closed session. Can we close the doors, please? Okay, we are back into open session. No action required. Do I have a motion to go into closed session for number two?
Make a motion to go into closed session for number two.
I have a motion in second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Kettlebaiter? Trustee Brochus?
Yep.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Brunner?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
President Langford?
Yes.
We are in open session. Alright, do I have a motion to go into closed session number three?
I'll move to go into closed session number three.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, roll call.
Trustee Kettlebaiter?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Brunner?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yep.
President Langford?
Yes.
Alright. Good job. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Alright.